These days, current events unfold on a dozen channels. Headlines all seem to be shouting. And good news can be as scarce as a moment to relax. So let's turn down the noise this summer. Unplug just a little bit. And head to a shelter from the storms of life. The historic port city of Alpena. Located on the sunrise shore of Michigan. Only a few hours' drive, but miles away from the way to the world. Nestled between a vast forest and an endless clear blue bay. Where the wonders of nature are as welcoming as the local hospitality. We can explore more than 200 shipwrecks in the largest freshwater sanctuary anywhere. Count the stairs to the top of a lighthouse. Or the mass that jet into the harbor sky at moonrise. Let's take a trip to the friendly picturesque city of Alpena. A haven from the world. That's pure Michigan. Your trip begins at Michigan.org.
For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the municipal council meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the city of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting, March 16th, 2015. Call the order please.
Johnson?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Noak?
Here.
Sexton?
Walagora?
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everyone had the opportunity to read the minutes from special session February 26th, 2015, and regular session March 2nd, 2015, and closed session of March 2nd, 2015. Any issues or changes? I know it's Mr. Obvious, but please mark Sean. Any modifications to the agenda this evening? Okay, citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed to maximum of five minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during a council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. If you do, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records. And the exceptions would be anyone presenting for the budget requests that are on the agenda. That will be when we get to them.
Good evening. I'm Kathleen Melville Hall, or to people who know me, Kate Hall. I guess we're among friends, so I can be Kate Hall. I just want to give you something I want to hand out to you this evening concerning our parks. And then I'd like to, next meeting, get on the agenda, but I wanted to get this out to you now so you could peruse it and have it to refer to for the time being. The only thing I will bring up is the urgent part, and the reason I'm trying to get this done now is with regard to Mischikiwa Park. Last year, the DNR let us know that the grasses and things growing along the shoreline are not native and they are considered invasive, and they know we can get rid of them. And it would be nice if at the south end of Mischikiwa Park, we were to get rid of much of the vestige that's growing there, so there might be a lot more room for people to do things with. Such as maybe we could have Sand Beach back like we did before. This would take some doing. I understand that. When I was stationed in Hawaii, Waikiki Beach is nothing but a coral reef. The only reason Waikiki Beach is sandy is because they bring sand in. Key West, that's the same thing. All their beaches are coral, except for one, and they imported the sand from the Bahamas. In Towis, they import sand and they bring it along the shore, because they know that if you want tourists to come, they want to be able to wallow in that nice soft sand. And the nice way to do it is to bring some nice clean soft sand back there over to here. But that's the part I wanted to just bring up to your attention now, and I will leave you with these, and then you can look them over, and in the next meeting, I'll get on the agenda. Thank you so much. God bless.
Thank you.
Okay, in case you didn't intend to already, please contact Ray sometime during the week to explain to him what you'd like to be on the agenda, just in the event that he has any questions for you.
Good evening. My name's Bill DeKet, and I'm from East Towis. And I just came to say thank you. Recently, you had some fire truck bids, and just wanted to say thank you to Chief Fordwood for allowing me to bid, and for the city council as well. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, the consent agenda this evening are, A, bills to be allowed in the amount of $252,325.75. B, one city council appointment to the Alpena Wildlife Sanctuary Board for a three-year term expiring March 1st, 2018, is Thomas Orth. And C is a resolution of support for the Alpena County Parks Bathhouse and Boat Launch Reconstruction.
I move we approve the consent, the agenda as presented.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, now, Chief Fordwood should come up for recognition of former Fire Marshal Dave Robbins' retirement from the city fire department after 20 years and three months of service.
Dave, come on up. Dave's been with us, like the mayor said, 20 years and three months. He came from a career in law enforcement previously in another fire department. He brought a lot of expertise to our department and spent much of that time as fire marshal enforcing fire prevention codes throughout our community. It is certainly a great loss that Dave has moved on to greener pastures at the hospital, but we want to congratulate him. And Mayor, if you would come and do the presentation. Congratulations, Dave.
Anything you want to say, please, by all means.
Everybody, I'll try to be brief. It was a very distinct honor for me to be able to serve the city and citizens of both the city and the county. He has a firefighter paramedic. The one thing I knew I wanted to say when I got up here is being part of the history now. I just want everybody to grasp for a couple minutes the history of the fire department, how far back it goes, and what a tremendous department you have. There are over, there are between 5,000 and 6,000 organized full-time fire departments in the United States. Alpena was number 623. You have a long, rich history, and Alpena has always been on the cutting edge of EMS. There are a lot of fire departments southwest that pat themselves on the back for doing EMS as early as the 60s. Alpena was doing it, what, cheap '38?
1937.
1937. Keep it up. Thank you.
We have no announcements this evening. I do have a couple of proclamations. First is, they're with me, sorry, Social Host Awareness Month. Whereas adults who provide alcohol to those below the legal drinking age of 21 are placing those youth at risk for health, safety, and legal problems. And whereas alcohol is the drug of choice among America's adolescents and is used by more young people than tobacco or illicit drugs, more than one-fifth of youth begin drinking before age 13. Whereas underage drinking contributed to a wide range of costly health and social problems, including motor vehicle crashes, the greatest single mortality risk for underage drinkers, suicide, interpersonal violence, for example homicides, assaults, and rapes, unintentional injuries such as burns, falls, and drowning, brain impairment, alcohol dependence, risky sexual activity, academic problems, and alcohol and drug poisoning. And whereas, on average, alcohol is a factor in the deaths of approximately 4,700 young people in the United States per year, shortening their lives by an average of 60 years. And whereas, according to the 2014 Michigan Profile for Health Youth Report, of 14 counties of northern Michigan who participated, an average 23.8% of 9th graders and 49.6% of 11th graders have been drunk in their lifetime. Of these reporting students who drank recently, 58.9% reported that they usually drank alcohol at another person's home during the past 30 days. Whereas, 100% of any alcohol consumed by a minor came from an adult. At one time, an adult over the age of 21 was in control of the alcohol, and a minor gained access to it. And whereas, it is illegal for adults to knowingly allow their child's friends to drink alcohol in their home, even with the permission of the friend's parents. And adults have the authority and should have the responsibility to take steps to reduce the likelihood that their homes will become venues for underage drinking. Now therefore, I, Matthew J. Walagora, by the virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Alpena, do hereby proclaim April 2015 as Social Host Awareness Month in the city of Alpena, and call upon all parents, citizens, homeowners, and property owners to host gatherings responsibly and take measures to eliminate access of alcohol to persons under the age of 21. This evening, we have Donna Hardey's. Donna, what organization are you?
I am with Catholic Human Services. Yep. And I will accept the proclamation. Thank you very much. And with that, you will start seeing these around Alpena. We're using Alpena as one of our pilot counties. And I would like to present one to have you place here at City Hall. And then Joel, I have one for you, if you want to come up and get that, as well as just a couple of posters to hang in the lobby. Any citizens that are interested in having these in their yards or their workplace, they are available for $5 apiece. We are, you know, just looking to make people aware. You know, times have changed. Just saying, I'm going to remove keys and not let the youth drive, there are far other risks. You know, the gentleman that just served 20 years, any of your firefighters in the MS will attest, no one wants to go out to one of those scenes. So, you know, the safer that we can keep kids and we as adults just make everyone aware of that. So, you know, contact me, I will leave some information with the city, or get ahold of me at Catholic Human Services, and we will start getting these out in the community. I'd love to see it flooded, and parents know that if you put a sign in your yard, you're agreeing that I'm not going to serve with that. And I want to say thank you to the city because of the red barrel. Just went through that, and you'll see with the hunt report, along with the social host, as well as underage drinking, we have the prescription drug issue. You can now take any of your controlled substances to City Hall and dispose of them. Joel has been just a wonderful partner.
Public Safety.
Yeah, Public Safety Billy, excuse me. So, at any time, yeah. Sorry. But, you know, feel free to get rid of, you know, unused prescriptions that you're no longer taking. Another risk that we have in homes, that when you, you know, have teenagers over to your house, something you need to be concerned of. And I just wanted to share an upcoming meeting that you can give to the council. We have community members interested in trying to get a Families Against Narcotics group started. And there is a meeting a week from tonight at ACC telling people how to go about that. And if it's something that's pursued, you will probably hear from us looking for support because they'd like to have, you know, city and county involvement in those groups as well as supports. So, I didn't mean to take up time, but I appreciate everything so much.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Next, I have the proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in this community. And whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment harm our community, and statistics from the 2011 national survey show, one in five women and one in 71 men will be raped at some point in their lives. And whereas child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that the American Journal of Preventive Maintenance estimated in 2005 that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience a sexual assault before the age of 18. And whereas, the Juvenile Offenders and Victims 2006 National Report states that young people experience heightened rates of sexual violence, and youth ages 12 to 17 were 2.5 times as likely to be victims of rape or assault, a sexual assault. And whereas, the 2007 Campus Sexual Assault Study indicates that on our nation's campuses, one in five women and one in 16 men are sexually assaulted during their time in college. And whereas, we must work together to educate our community about sexual violence prevention, supporting survivors, and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions. And whereas, when we actively get involved, we can prevent sexual violence. The first step is increasing education, awareness, and community involvement. It's time for all of us to take action to create a safer environment for all. Now therefore, I, Matthew J. Walagora, by the virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Alpena, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2015 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the city of Alpena, and join advocates in communities across the country in taking action to prevent sexual violence. And this evening, we have Rachel Verzek and Val Williams. And what organization are you guys with?
Sheltering.
Sheltering.
Thank you so much. Thanks. We just wanted to say thank you so much to the mayor and to city council for supporting this. This is very exciting. This year's theme for Sexual Assault Awareness Month is Safer Campuses, Brighter Futures. So, in that spirit, we've also started a really exciting partnership with Alpena Community College. We're planning some amazing events coming up in April, including a community forum, as well as a candlelight vigil and survivor speak-out. So we're really, really excited to start opening up to conversation about this. We know that this happens in our community. It's just something that people don't want to talk about because it's awful. But what we're trying to do is make a safe welcoming space for people to come forward and to start feeling together.
Yeah, and I just want to add too that the city has always been supportive of, or has been for as long as I've been at shelter of the issue of sexual violence and erratic even in our communities, as well as domestic violence. Thank you, Joel, and the Alpena City Police Department for supporting us and kind of giving us the guts to come here tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, report of officers. Tonight, we have bids. The first one is the fire mini pumper.
Good evening. We took bids on the mini pumper with some very stringent specifications in terms of timelines. The problem being that if we hold on to the old truck too long, it loses value dramatically. So we really need a truck very quickly in order to maximize that value. We got two very, very good bids from two different bidders, HME and Haltfire, Pierce Manufacturing. Pierce is a larger manufacturer, and they have a great product. They were just a little bit higher than HME, and that's why we recommend the low bid, because they're a really good manufacturer as well, just not as well-known. After careful consideration of both bids, I'm recommending that we award the bid to the low bidder, HME Incorporated, in the amount of $179,475. I would like to point out however, that we need to buy some five-inch hose to go on that truck from another vendor. At the time of this memo, it looked like that was going to be $5,400. As it turns out, we've done some more shopping, and I've got that down to $4,000. So before those numbers changed, it would have been $184 total, much less than $210. Both dealers had arranged to have the old truck appraised and purchased by another dealer that deals in used fire apparatus. Both dealers appraised the value of it at $35,000. Both offered $35,000. And so, this bid includes that as well, which brings our total investment in the new truck to $149. Up on the screen is the actual truck that we're proposing. It's sitting in the factory in Wyoming, Michigan. HME is a Michigan company. And it's almost ready. They need to add the winch and do a couple minor things, but it should be here about April 15th or so. Fully equipped and ready to go. And about a week after that, we'll have the opportunity to get the old truck decommissioned and out of here, and that $35,000 back in the city coffers. So at this point, we're just looking to award the bid. Once again, both bids were very, very good. Both companies very reputable, one was just a little lower than the other.
Hey Chief, just for public clarification, can you maybe real briefly summarize why we're going this route? We talked about that before.
Certainly, absolutely. Currently, we use a full-size rescue pumper to chase the ambulance, if you will, to assist the ambulance on medical calls. And many times, probably a couple times a month, I get calls, I'm sure the manager and the mayor do as well, saying, "Why are you so wasteful that you would take this expensive truck and run it all over town on things other than fires?" And the answer is that the people that are on that truck are the last ones left if a fire comes in. If you see that truck on the road, chances are there's nobody left in the station. The ambulances are all out, that's the last one. And so if there is a fire, they've got to be able to respond directly from the medical call to the fire and be able to deal with that. Additionally, that truck carries all the rescue equipment, the jaws of life, the cribbing, the airbags, all that kind of thing is carried on that truck, which may be needed on a medical call. And so, a couple of reasons why we send that truck, but it is really large and really expensive. The replacement value on it is about $450,000. It's very expensive to operate, and it's kind of more than we need to do what we're doing with it. We do have other fire pumpers. We have Engine One, Engine Two, and Tower One, all of which have pumps and tanks, and so they can all be used for that. And in fact, this vehicle can also be used for that. This is a much smaller package, obviously, smaller form factor, if you will, but it still carries a 1,500 gallon a minute pump, it carries 400 gallons of water, carries up to 800 feet of five-minute supply hose. That's one of the other things we do with this truck, is supply the other truck. One goes to the scene, one goes to the hydrant, and then they bring hose to one another. It'll do all of those things in a package that costs half as much to operate and half as much to purchase. And almost the same lifespan. We worn the old truck out in 15 years, and it should have a longer lifespan. This one's expected to last 15 to 18 years. So we're actually saving about 50% by going this direction.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions for Chief?
Assuming maintenance is less.
Yeah, this is a Ford F-550 diesel chassis, just like our DPW dump trucks and what have you. So maintenance is much more available, the parts are readily available, it's not custom parts like the big trucks, and they're much less expensive.
We'll award a bid for the mini pumper to HME for $179,475.
Second. Time goes to the run.
Attack on the hose.
You'll have to finish with the hose, right?
And the $35,000, saying, "I want the old truck." Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Next up bids for the water plant flow meter.
On February 23rd, the city received an open bid for the purchase of flow meters for installation at the water production plant. The flow meters will be installed in the high-service pumping area to record volumes pumped into the system from the plant. Four bids were received as follows. Integrated Controls out of Traverse City, their base bid was $15,938.55. That was with a 5% accuracy model. It says here .2 accuracy, and their bid actually said .2. Reading the specs, it's a .5% accuracy, but still, much more accurate. That's a $5,006.71 upgrade. JRank Electric out of Mount Pleasant was $8,549. SW Controls out of Farmington Hills, $16,449. And Utilities Instrumentation out of Dexter, Michigan was $24,795. Bid documents received were forwarded to Mike Collins, Water Production Plant Supervisor, for his review and recommendation. Memorandum, he submitted with his recommendations attached. Mike did not recommend the two low bidders, and we looked at the total package from Integrated Controls with a higher accuracy rate. So the two low bidders that he references are JRank and SW Controls out of Farmington Hills. Did not meet or bid the project utilizing a single probe flow measuring device. The Integrated Controls model has actually two probes that stick down into the water column and flow in the pipe and measure the flow as it goes past. Single probe are wonderful, they've been in existence for years, but they really need to have an ideal situation where you have a long run of straight smooth pipe so that you can get, you don't have turbulent flow, you've got smooth lameter flow through the We don't have that. We have far from that at our water plant, where it's going to be installed is a very constrictive space. That's why the two-probe model is a much better application. And as I stated, the style is acceptable when you have ideal scenarios. In the case of the installation at our water plant, the installation location is not ideal, and the dual-probe flow meter as specified in the Integrated Controls bid is more appropriate for our installation parameters. Mike also recommended including the increased accuracy upgrade to, and it's going to get us as .2, it should be .5% at a cost of $5,006.71. Thus, the total package cost, including all of the equipment specified in the bid, is $20,009.45 and $26. The city did budget $20,000 for this project. Obviously, we're over by a little under $1,000. We also have in that same line item, the project for valves. Am I thinking of my valves or filter away valves? Slipped my mind there. We budgeted quite a bit of money, we're actually, United Waters is going to do the installations, we're just buying the valves out of that line item. So that project will come in significantly less than what we had budgeted for. So there will be sufficient funds in that line item for this project. So, there will be sufficient funds in that line item for this project.
Rich, just out of curiosity, and maybe I missed it, but the Utilities Instrumentation bid, was that also for the double probe or were they just?
I think they were for the double probe model.
At least had a similar comparison.
Rich, how long do these flow meters, are they expected to last?
The ones that we have in there right now are installed in 1953, 1950s. So, we would easily anticipate getting 25 years plus out of them. And the nice thing about these is, what's going to wear out is the probe potential. You can pull those out, put new ones in at a much lower cost. This is also, it has, it takes the electronic signal, it data logs it so that we get a complete readout of that flow in real-time.
Questions for Rich? Take the motion, acceptors.
I move we accept the bid from Integrated Controls in Traverse City to the 5% accuracy model.
Point five. Point five.
Second.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Thank you, Rich. Next up, we have Communications and Petition. First up is Emily Meyerson, Northern Michigan Trails Coordinator for the Michigan Trails Council.
Been a couple of years, huh? Maybe not that long?
Been a couple of years. I'm Emily Meyerson, I'm with the Department of Michigan Trails Council and I work with the Department of Natural Resources to help develop their trail systems in northern Michigan. I've been coming before this board probably for about eight years, I think, on and off. And we worked on the northeast state trail connecting Alpena up to Sheboygan in the Alpena Trailhead Project, which we hope to see built this year. And I'm back now to talk about the other rail corridor, the DNR owns that goes from Alpena to Hillman. And the DNR is moving forward with developing that. You receive maps, I think, in the mail. It's about a 22-mile corridor, except there is a gap in ownership between M-65 and Salina Road. And the truth is, last year, we were going to, at this time, we're about ready to apply. We being the DNR and MDOT are working in partnership. And we were going to apply for grant last year, but we realized we didn't have enough information about where to put the trail in the gap. And then even more importantly, we realized we didn't know enough about the five bridges and bridges can add up in cost. So, we wanted to make sure our grants covered everything. The DNR took a step back, they had a working committee who worked for the last year to try to resolve some of those things. They did an engineering study on the bridges and found out there was significant work that needed to be done on about four of the five. And we also determined, we had ways to get around the gap area, but we didn't really like any of them and they were expensive. So, when we started looking at doing the math and you apply for grants and you know, you sort of play a little bit of numbers and match, we decided that the best thing was to try to phase the project. One, maybe we can come up with a better solution for the gap area. And secondly, it would help us with the cost to improve the bridges. And the bridges really are a year-round improvement because it's really the snowmobile boomers that have the load capacity versus the non-motorized users that use the trail that we're getting a lot of the funding for. So, it's a win-win situation. So, what we did is we scaled the project back. The DNR and MDOT are applying for grants this year for 13 and a half miles from Franklin Street here in the city of Potaski to M-65 North of Lashine. What?
You said Potaski.
Oh, sorry. I'm so sorry. You know where I'm from.
You just killed the whole chat. We don't know.
Enter that, but you just take something and change the names.
No, it's unique. So, it's 13 and a half miles. And I am here today to ask for resolution of support and talk a little bit about the .7 miles in the city of Alpena. And that .7 miles, it's unique, it's the one part of this trail that no snowmobiles are allowed. It bisects the school facilities between the high school and the sports complex. I've been working with your city staff to figure out, one, do you want this improved? DNR could just leave it as is. And how do you want it improved? When the DNR develops their trails, they're usually doing a crush limestone for snowmobiles, it's a little lower cost. But in the city, it's different. You have a great bypass system, it connects right to your schools. And the staff agreed, they thought it should be asphalt and sort of be a continuation of your bypath with lighting. And so, we looked at that and I've talked to the DNR and they're willing to do that and all the grants will include that. So, that's about a total cost. So, the total cost of the project's about $2 million. The city of Alpena part, not including a road crossing, is about $172,000. And then, we're also going to improve the crossing of Hobbs-Bagley Street and try to make some improvements there of the crossing of that trail, but that's not included in the city portion. So, the city area, it's about almost $200,000 improvement. So, I was here today to ask for your support for the project and ask for a match for the project. It would be a pledge, it's about 20% of the improvement of the trail. In the city of Alpena, it's about $35,000. It would just be a pledge, only, it would only be collected if all the grants were awarded and we would start construction. So, we're looking, construction at the earliest would be 2017, so that money wouldn't be needed until then. So, that's what I'm here about. I also wanted to point out, one of the maps I sent you, I didn't have big ones for the public, but it shows the whole system of trails. And what's exciting is, if you look at the whole system of trails, this big network, is from this year, from Elanson in Emmett County, Mackinac City will be finished. So, at the end of this year, you'll be able to get from Charlevoix to Potaski to Mackinac City to Alpena completely on non-motorized trail. So, we're really excited about that because it really creates this system and network we've been talking about, especially for bicycle tourism and people coming to use the trails from long distances. So, we're really excited, you'll be able to go from Lake Huron to the Straits to Lake Michigan. So, I'm sort of excited. That's separate, then, is trail, I just thought I'd let you know that project's going on. You have any questions?
You mentioned that this kind of takes the trail up to the gap, and you're just not sure what to do yet. What happens when that trail ends on around 65? Is it'll just, you know, if you're on the trail, then all of a sudden, you get to the gap, you mean, will that be a definite trailhead or a definite point or are we still trying to see?
Well, right now, with the trail just in there, we're hoping to put in like a couple of little parking spaces. The DNR does own 100-foot width, so sort of make something there. There's not enough room to make it a large trailhead. MDOT, there is the park-and-ride lot that's right on the trail on M-32, so we're hoping that to sort of develop that a little bit, have connections for trail access. And then, our hope is if this is funded, we would apply next year to do Phase Two from Hillman to hopefully M-65, but if not, to Salina, if we can figure that out. So, we'd hope to do it sort of right away to keep the momentum going.
Now, that trail beyond 65 to Hillman already exists. It's just, it's just in Phase Three of your improvement plan. Am I right? I mean, we've ridden, you can ride a snowmobile from Alpena to Hillman, you've been able to on this route for years where those bridges are. So, it exists. So, it won't stop at 65 and you just won't know what to do. There's, you've been capable of doing it for years now.
Yeah, there is, there's a snowmobile route that goes around it and that's what we looked at improving for non-motorized. But for non-motorized, it just wasn't as ideal as for snowmobiling. We would be putting people right on the road. We were looking at putting a side path in along Salina Road, there's a large wetland. It's all doable and if that's our only choice, I think the DNR would head with it, but they thought they'd give it a little bit of time and see if they could find a better solution.
Right.
So, yeah, it would be signed, it would probably be signed as a route to get around the wetlands.
Emily, is this program toward the end of your vision or you have a lot further to go with the trails program?
Everybody wants trails, so it doesn't seem to end. We had our vision, our network map, and we've been working on that, but there's a gap between Hillman and Gaylord. And I don't know what the solution is to that, but I would imagine that, you know, there's going to be people that are going to want to try to fill that gap as time goes on. We're sort of, you know, you always think the low-hanging fruit and rail corridors are low-hanging fruit. They're less expensive to develop than a side path because you have a graded area. So, right now, it is the low-hanging fruit, so we're continuing to build the low-hanging fruit first.
And like you stated, the portion that we would resolve this evening would be the .7 miles within the city. So, that basically starts at, on the high school side of Bagley and goes how far?
To Franklin.
To Franklin. Okay, so it's basically just through the school property and pops out and then another stretch.
Run parallel to Ontario Street.
Ontario.
Ontario. And then, we will have to complete the bypath from Franklin up to Old Washington to Campbell and then connect there at the east end of George Washington Park there.
Right.
Where the bypath is already located and then connected to that.
Sort of make, and we can't tag on somehow the rest of what we would want to do onto the same project, or no?
We talked about that, it gets complicated because it's different owners and with the grants, you have to have ownership of what you're developing. So, we actually talked about that at one point briefly, but we couldn't figure out an easy solution to go.
Okay.
The likelihood is that the path there will be pretty much along the roadway, up Franklin to Old Washington, utilizing, you know, probably a widened or part of the right-of-way for that there to get it up across Washington Avenue to the bypath on the other side.
Rich, is this proposed area a path that we would have to upgrade eventually anyway or maintenance or put money into or not?
Which, are you talking about?
The .7 that's in town. It's already there, I guess.
Well, it's there, it's owned by the DNR. We have looked at and probably will be eventually working with them to lease a part of that to make improvements to Ontario Street because there's very limited right-of-way along part of that and abusing part of the railroad right-of-way to do that. But it's there, we would not be making any improvements along there without, what we had done is a number of years ago, we had contacted with the DNR about doing this very And of them then basically providing us an easement over the veil. But they didn't want to execute that until we were ready to actually do the bypath. It was a matter of funding, so it hadn't occurred. Basically, with this trail project, it takes care of the fact that, it takes care of most of the funding. We're putting in about 20% of the portion that's within our city limits, including the lighting and everything. So, it basically took care of that issue that kind of hung out there because of lack of funding. Now, by tagging on as part of the project and upgrading the path within the city, it's a win-win for everybody, the city, the state, and all the users. We will be at the point where there's that driveway that goes back to the football field. We have agreed on there to install aprons on each side because since they do drive between those at times, the feeling would be without those, we would probably tear up the edges of the paved bypath. So, we'll simply have aprons on each side so that that will protect the path, still allow vehicles to cross there without damaging the patron. And the schools are supportive of that. Rich and I had met with them a few months ago and then we met with Brent Holcomb today and they're fully supportive of it.
And the full .7 miles is $35,000.
Our share of it.
Our share.
Right. Total was about $175,000 and that would be 20%, which is a pretty good Regina fund.
That's how we've been able to improve this community for the most part in the last decades.
I think it's a great spot to improve. It's a good project. So, are there any other questions for Emily, unless you do?
I move we approve resolution 2015-04.
Second.
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you so much, thank you for your support of trails. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up to hear on Humane Society Annual Report Budget Request. Natalie Francis is here, I think.
I'm a little shy to come in. Hi, I'm Natalie Francis, I'm the Executive Director for the Human Society and this is Chat Hands, Nan Leonard, she is one of our board members. I believe I have already, I've already sent everything in to you, so you have a chance to review it. I just really wanted to thank the city for their support now, in the past, and hopefully in the future. We really appreciate it. We are asking for the same that we did last year, the $14,000. And, you know, it could really help us out to keep this community safe and healthy with those animals. So, if you'd like to ask me some questions, that'd be great. Otherwise, I can tell you about what we're doing here with our little friend. He is a meet and greet, he'll be going to City Police this Thursday, they're our newest addition along with. We appreciate our animals coming here to City Hall as well on Thursdays. We now have six different places where they're going on Thursdays, so the shelter's pretty empty as far as dogs go on Thursdays, dogs and cats. So, getting the animals out in the community has been great. Not only does it give awareness to the shelter, but also the animals are getting adopted a lot quicker. So, it's been a great program.
I can attest to the success of it. One of them that came here is now ours.
It's me, yeah.
So, we've had her for three weeks, three, four weeks now.
Yeah, our beautiful Ziva.
Yes.
Your beautiful Ziva now.
Yes. She has taken over the house.
Thank you.
Natalie, the only question I had was, of course, we have all your information. What I wanted to know was, under your salary and wages, how many employees do you have? How many people does that cover? Do you know right off?
Yeah, well, basically, myself, I'm full-time and then I have one other person that's full-time and then six to seven part-time.
How many volunteers would you say you had?
We have a lot of volunteers. I mean, you know, it's really hard to put a number on that. I have probably about 20 that come in regularly, but then I have just an array of different groups and churches and scouts and things like that that come in as well, so.
And one thing I don't see in the budget, is it fair to say that ideally, you would have a bigger facility or is there a need for more space or are you pretty satisfied with where you're at?
Well, we're currently building in the barn that's right next door to the old facility, so please come out and take a look if you can. We now have six dog kennels open there, we have a brand-new cat calinee open, we have a maternity room, we have a surgery room, a meet and greet room. What we're looking to do is really close down the old shelter and put everything into the new. But right now, we're working out of both areas. So, I think that with what we have, being able to work through both of them, right now, we're looking okay with space.
Could you tell us a little bit about your upcoming fundraiser?
Yeah, this week.
Please.
It is our annual gala, it's a live and silent auction. It will be at the Sanctuary Inn. It is our biggest fundraiser of the year and we're having help from Cindy and Mayor and we're very excited about that. And so, I think I have six tickets left.
How much is the table there? For a good cost.
For a good cost, okay. Excellent. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Karen, do you need a receipt or file or anything?
No, we have them this year.
That's fine. Next up, here in Undercover Narcotics Team Annual Report and Budget Request. Mark Pintart?
You seem very inconspicuous in the back, I guess.
I'm sorry, I'm dressed up, but, uh, I had a suit and tie on this morning, but we had to change for work, obviously. Um, this is the best way for me to introduce myself to you, uh, council as well as to the community, I'm Mark Pintar, I'm the new team commander at Hunt, recently transferred from the West Branch post up here to Alpena. Um, I'm here briefly just to speak to you regarding the letter that I sent to, uh, the council regarding continued funding, uh, for our budget. I'm currently working on our new burn grant and I wanted to give you just some brief statistics. Uh, from 2014, out of the 156 investigations from Hunt, 61 of those were initiated in the city of Alpena. And out of those 61, 50 of the 98 people that were arrested were also charged with crimes just in the city of Alpena. Uh, today I ran our statistics for just our current year with our complaints that have been generated from January 1st and as of right now, 83% of our complaints coming just out of Alpena County alone. So we're, we're seeing a big increase in heroin, obviously, uh, we had a big bust last week, um, I think some of that made it to the news, we did a finishing, uh, clip today with the news this morning regarding that, um, but in the past three years alone, just with heroin, we've had over a 500% increase of use in the community, so. The funding is for, uh, obviously keeping our officers that are loaned to us from surrounding agencies to the team, there's myself with the unit, I have a sergeant, I have two troopers, then I have a deputy from Mount Morantzi. And this funding will continue now to let me have, I've met with Chief Jett, I have a city officer on and last week I learned that the Alpena, um, County Finance Committee approved a deputy, so there'll be a deputy coming out. It's basically an adventure.
I will put questions for you.
Yes, sir.
Are you largely funded federally, is that correct?
We are to a point, that, that's what we write the burn grant for and the grant consists of money that comes from the feds and that is to help pick up some of the funding, but then the additional funding that I've asked for from the finance committee, that goes to each separate agency or county that, county that contributes to our team and that's to help to fund the additional officers as well as vehicles for our, our team and our secretary running the necessary paperwork that she has to do.
And, uh, a little off topic, but you're a good resource, might as well ask you here, a lot of concern in the community about the, the rise in heroin here, which does seem to contradict maybe the national, um, you know, drug of choice, I guess. What would be your, your explanation of why we have such a heavy influx of that particular narcotic here?
I think it's, it's a cheap drug to make, it's a cheap drug to get, unfortunately it's a very addictive drug and once you're on it, it's very hard to come off of it. And, uh, myself as well as my sergeant, we, uh, we do go throughout the communities, um, he's been doing obviously more of it than I have because I just got here, but we do go throughout the communities and do public speakings at the schools, uh, he's heading up the drug court program with, uh, with the district court and trying to get people into a different, um, program to try to help them get out of that because it's, it's a very tough drug to, to get out of and what we've seen lately is, I think, the reason for the, the influx of heroin coming up here, we've had a lot of people from the Flint area traveling up here. Uh, several of our complaints from last year were, uh, individuals that came up from Flint and made pert, uh, sales up here and then left. And it's just hurting the community up here and they're, they're moving out of the area down there because that's so heavily hit now.
It's probably a better market for their perspective, I guess.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And we'll be, um, while council's aware that, uh, that, but for the media as well as that, uh, drug is the, that's the topic of discussion and presentation in our next IG meeting, um, intergovernmental meeting, so whether you're representative there or someone from your staff, uh, would be welcome to come with that as well, I think the sheriff is setting it up, so.
Okay.
That'll be our topic for that, so we'll definitely get a brief on where the community sits, where the county sits with that. Any other questions regarding the request for funds?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Welcome to Alpena.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Our new business, we've got, uh, the deputy fire chief, fire marshal position. Have you almost got to before?
Yeah.
The paramedics had to leave.
They take option.
Andy is chief.
We still have one right now. Good evening, once again, we'll try to be brief, I know you've got, uh, you've got some reading, I'd like to introduce, uh, Andy Marso, one of our critical care paramedics, he's also the president of the International Association of Firefighters, Union Local 623, and, uh, he's going to co-present with me tonight because we've worked closely on this, making this all work together so that we can both, uh, we can both win. Win-wins are good. Um, with Dave's retirement, and Dave's done a great job, but with Dave's retirement, we see an opportunity to meet additional urgent needs within the department. Obviously, we've grown a lot, we've increased our mission a lot, we've increased our call volume by 100%, uh, it's quite an operation to manage now. And so what we'd like to do is, we'd like to create a hybrid position on a trial basis, a five-year trial basis, uh, that would include not only the fire marshal and fire prevention duties that Dave did, but also some administrative duties in helping to run the emergency operation and the ambulance operation at the same time. It's very complex, there, there's an awful lot going on and as a result, it's hard to stay up on top of everything at the same time. One of the things that's most challenging is trying to keep Alpena connected to the rest of the world while still being in Alpena to deal with all the things that need to be done on a day-to-day basis, so if we had two administrators to do that, so that if I'm in a meeting here, he can be in a meeting there, or if he's in a meeting here, I can be taking care of the budget at, at the office or whatever the case is, that would be a whole lot more effective. We believe that the growth in the community over the next five years will eventually result in our being able to create this position as a permanent position and still fill the union fire inspector position, which at this point we're proposing to leave vacant. We're not killing it, we're not making it go away, we're just leaving it vacant for five years, or up to five years. If that growth doesn't occur and we can't afford both positions, at the end of five years, this person would revert to Dave's old job. But in the meantime, we're betting on growth in Alpena and I think that's a pretty safe bet. So, so this is what we're looking to do, we've, uh, we've come up with a memorandum of understanding with the union and with job descriptions, both of which I believe we've forwarded to council in the past. Uh, Andy's here to help me answer any questions you might have, we're looking for your authorization to try it out and see if it works. Questions?
I think I know the answer to this, but, you know, anytime you give up a union job for an administrative job, that can be an issue. So I assume Andy's here to tell us that it's not an issue.
It's not an issue, we've already, we're really agreed to the MOU, we have a sign to have, we already agreed to, it's already been to our union membership, uh, we think it's like you said, a win-win, because we're thinking we need, and within the next five years, you're going to need to fill that Dave's old position and, uh, we just see it as a, gaining another position in the fire department.
And I appreciate you coming, it's one thing for him to say, well, the union's okay, but it's.
No, we're good, this is, we're behind this.
We appreciate that. You know, many times people will say, well, gosh, you don't need any more chiefs, any more Indians, well, as you notice, we filled, we backfilled the Indians first. Now that we have the Indians, now we need another chief to keep the thing running well. And I think this is a way to do that without harming the, the union, without harming the city, but having both sides win.
I'll also just point out quickly, that the memorandum of understanding is tighter within, so we're going to take somebody within the side of the ranks, either one of our three captains or one of our three lieutenants, and they're going to get promoted, which will be then a trickle-up effect, I guess, some firefighters will get promoted, a cap, a lieutenant will get promoted, so it's a win-win all the way across the board. And it's been a pleasure working with, uh, the chief, Mr. Sundin, uh, we had a meeting sometime ago, month, month and a half ago, and we were right at the tail end of it and, uh, through our lawyers and myself and the rest of my executive committee, we suggested this trial period and, uh, it's just kind of grown into its own thing. Something new, but why not try it and there's nothing, nothing to lose, I believe, for the city and in five years, if it's not working, we'll go back to the Dave's old position.
Not a bad idea.
Hopefully we do continue to grow and, and need, need.
So, yeah, I certainly appreciate the cooperation between all the entities that, that got to this point. Um, just to be clear, that, that within the five years, we'll either, we'll either fill the position in the union for fire inspector or revert this person back to that position and you will be without a deputy chief.
That's correct.
But, so the, there isn't an option of eliminating that position on the table at this point?
No, that position's in the contract, it'll stay in the contract, we just won't fill it right now.
Okay. Excellent, I appreciate it. Have you got any other questions for the chief or Andy?
No, just a comment of thank you, I appreciate this going forward, this is kind of the epitome of what, what goes on in city government, uh, in city staff is that, I mean, there's many people on the entire staff that are doing multiple positions and just the cooperation between the union and our staff, I really appreciate it as well.
Karen, you probably don't need a motion from us until they actually go hire somebody?
No, you need to authorize the position.
So we're gonna, we're basically authorizing the, um, the, the general understanding?
Yeah.
And a new position, which is?
Deputy chief, fire marshal.
Maybe we authorize the repositioning, uh, to create a proposed deputy chief slash fire marshal position?
Second.
Would you add in there for five years?
For five years. I said that.
I heard you do it.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Did you say it right?
Next up is the hot mixed asphalt.
If you're going to keep it.
I'm not going to say Bill gets everything, you guys are planning, I tell you.
You can start going before Bill, he wants to.
Um, in December of 2014, the city received the attached request to ensure asphalt paving, renew the hot mixed asphalt patching program for 2015. Basically what they've said is, they're just going to continue the same price as we had last year into this year. And the contract did allow for one additional one-year renewal pro, uh, period. Um, it's my recommendation to the city engineer that the city council approve the renewal of the 2014 HMA patching program contract for 2015 with east shore asphalt paving for the same unit prices as utilized in 2014.
Any questions for Rich?
Plan to be.
All right. I move we approve the renewal of 2014 HMA patch program with east shore asphalt for the same prices as 2014.
Second. I'll say we didn't give you anything when you were in the country.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
They all got a fire truck, you got asphalt.
That's fair deal, right?
Because you gotta have better roads for your.
You gotta have better roads for the fire.
I got the fellow back of my truck up. It's not the same, it's just not the same.
Sure you're sticking around with the water and sewer tapping fee presentation?
Yeah. Number, going back probably over 10 years ago, the city established, uh, a program to annually adjust our tap-in fees, um, to accommodate for any inflationary increases, labor costs, et cetera. What we're proposing, and we, we typically ran between two and three percent, probably 90% of the time it's been a three percent increase, but that's what I'm recommending this year. And basically it takes our sewer and water, it increases it by $82 from 2743 up to 2825. Water, um, depending on size, will increase anywhere from $98 to $132. And, you know, one of the things, is that maybe it hasn't been explained in the past is what actually is impaled with this. And this, this is very, I would say very rarely used, um, this is only for brand-new taps, new locations where somebody wants a new service. Um, for outreplacing services, the city does that at no cost as long as it's a current service. Um, if it's been vacant for over a year, isn't functional, then they would have to pay a new tap-in fee potentially. We have waived that where the service is good, it can still be used, but what this involves is, basically the, the customer pays the tap-in fee and it gets put into, into our schedule, DPW crews will go out, take the asphalt off, excavate down, work with United Water, they'll come in, they'll physically auger a hole in the main with a tapping machine, tap it, put a corporation in and run new line, new copper water line out to, um, basically the front of the sidewalk line. Then they backfill it, curb guy, you know, they cold patch it to get it by until I can get my, my curb contractor in there, curb contractor replaces his, then the asphalt contractor replaces their, their portion. Um, we did look at a number, you know, because the question comes up, is it, is this fair? Is this reasonable for what our costs are? We did look at a few other communities, um, this afternoon, and granted, we didn't get the, we didn't get to look at that many, but they ranged anywhere from, uh, a thousand to $1,500, um, for some of the taps and again, not knowing their situation, not, I would say, most of our mains are underneath the streets, so we're always tearing up asphalt and other locations they may not. Just example, Traverse City has a tap-in fee that's relatively, it's I think $715 to $1,000, but then they also have 80, you know, $80 a square yard for asphalt removal and replacement, X number of dollars for curb replacement, and they, so basically the, the individual pays for, uh, whatever's disturbed. That's, that's, that's great if you're on the short side where the modern main's real close to you, but the poor guy who lives across the street, he's paying to tear up all that street. That's why we, we kind of took an average number a year ago and looked at it, what's the average of costs? Um, I pulled up some of the records from Public Works, um, just the labor alone, labor materials alone from our DPW doing some of this was running, you know, there were some at 500, there were some at $2,000, um, dollars to perform that work and then I have to pay for, I say, I, we have to hire, they have the curb done, the asphalt worked on, et cetera after that, so, um, if this is not, not a moneymaker, it's not a huge moneymaker, it's not one that we look to make a lot of money on, uh, we look to cover our costs is, is basically it. Um, and, you know, it's, is it on the high side, but yeah, but we also have, um, like I said, we have a lot of expend, a lot of expenses in installing those new services.
Rich, I appreciate the explanation, I think anything related to sewer and water is, you want to make sure it's, it's clear right now. Two quick comments and, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but we, every year we do two or three percent on this, right? And it's, it's largely reflected in the materials that we're having to use and the price increase with all that. Am I right that we only do dozen, have, two dozen of these a year anyway?
I, I, I don't think we would do that many, I would say, um, some, my thoughts on as far as the number, I would say probably two to three percent of that. There, there's very few that are done in areas where pavement has to be torn out, most of what we've put in is, uh, like the industrial park, um, and those lots out in North Industrial are pretty much used up now, but, uh, the Commerce Park area, um, the area around where the old Junior High used to be, um, don't, we don't, there's not very many vacant lots in town anymore, everything is pretty much developed, so we probably have maybe two or three a year.
Thank you.
Not a minute off.
And while you're standing there.
Yes.
Can we look for the water, uh, run to be lifted pretty soon or not?
Uh, the last dig we had, the frost is down five feet.
It's actually a little bit.
We had two freezers this morning. So my, uh, expectation this is going to be until May. Late April, early May. And that's what, that's the way it was last year too. The, the, once the frosting's down that deep, it takes a long time for it to heat up from the surface down and generally when you get, when you get a thaw like we had today, it'll drive the, the frost even deeper. So it's way too early to even start thinking about it. And we've had lots of calls from people.
And the city might want to look at, but.
If the media would help us, people need to continue.
We just put one out, it was Monday, we just put out a media release, I think it was. We just put out a media release, I think it was.
It was nice all weekend, yeah.
You did article, right? Yeah. It's been, it's pretty much been covered. Explain that, don't let the warm weather throw you. I had a question on your tap-in fees. You know, I guess as often as you guys can look into it and, and one day maybe they're leaving flat or lowering them for whatever reason, whatever your formula is to set them is, I understand, and I don't have an issue with that. I did have a quick question as far as the difference between a one inch and a two inch. There's a pretty significant, out of grand, is that, is that basically just because of the materials that are involved with copper being much more expensive, the bigger you get? But otherwise, anybody have any other questions specific to the tap-in fee increase, 3% increase?
Traverse City wasn't the only community that I found that actually put in a, in their formula, the restoration costs. And that's really what the tap-in fee is primarily focused on, is returning and the curb and the gutter, and you're also going to have to replace sidewalk because you got to go across the sidewalk in areas where the sidewalk, so there's a big emphasis on that.
Right. Yeah. I don't know, we've done it this way for quite a while, I don't know that, I don't know that we've had a lot of issues with somebody saying, you know, I'm not developing here because your tap-in fees are too expensive.
We can, I think it's a good exercise for us to go through and track those costs for a year and see where they're actually running, what our costs are on an average.
That'd be great, just, yeah. I think we'd appreciate that.
If we approve the 2015 tap-in fees as presented?
Second.
Nowak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Thank you, Rich. And last up, we have the beach debris study results.
And I, tonight, we have two folks from Environmental Consultants and Technology here to provide that presentation and.
What? There's nothing else.
Fire truck.
We can work with that.
Just keeps putting it out there, doesn't it?
They don't like you.
Well, good evening. It's a pleasure to be here tonight on your behalf to share with you what we found during a study we conducted with the city of Alpena to figure out what was going on with your beaches, specifically the debris that was accumulating on your beaches. So what we'd like to do tonight is do just a quick overview of the study that we conducted for you and then be available to answer your questions. It's late, and I understand that you've all received the report and hopefully you've had a chance to read it. So we'll hit some of the highlights and then allow the details to come out in your questions, because that really will tell us what's important to you anyway, so. So let's get started with that. First of all, I'm Marty Boot, and I represent Environmental Consulting and Environmental Consulting and Technology Incorporated. I'm an environmental scientist with 23 years' experience. And?
Annette Maria, also with Environmental Consulting and Technology with about 18 years' experience, I'm an environmental engineer.
That is an introduction, let me just give you a brief overview of the scope of the study so you understand clearly what it is that we intended to do, because obviously there's some things that we didn't plan to do and that would have costed additional money for the city to undergo in terms of the study. So first of all, we wanted to map and characterize the debris. There was a lot of conjecture about what exactly was on the beaches, whether it was wood, whether it was vegetation, whether it was a mix of those. So we wanted to look at the material that was actually on your beaches. And what we did is, we used GPS mapping technology to map the location of what we would call debris fields, in terms of their length and their width relative to the shoreline. And then we actually collected samples of that debris, took it back to our offices and sorted it and characterized it to try to figure out exactly what it was. So that was the first part of it, that mapping characterization of the debris. Then we wanted to try to locate potential sources. If indeed it is wood debris or vegetative debris, where's it coming from? Is it coming from within the system itself? Is it coming from existing sources? Are they all historical sources, all the way back to the logging era of the late 1800s, for example? Or is this a type of a mix of those? And as part of that, we took several different approaches. First, we used what's called satellite image analysis, satellite imagery analysis. And there's ways of analyzing images taken from satellites that will tell us if there's debris on the bottom of an aquatic system or if there's aquatic vegetation, for example. They're basically mathematical ways of looking at the light reflection range from an image that is indicative of aquatic vegetation, for example, or organic debris on the bottom of the river or the bay. We went out in the field and actually drug a net through the water with the intent of trying to collect the debris that was actually floating on the surface or near the surface in the water. We used a device that we sent down to the bottom and actually tried to collect what we call a grab sample of debris off of the bottom to see if woody debris is contained within that. And then we also conducted research on MPDS permits issued in the area. Now, the MPDS system is, let's call it the National Pluton Discharge Elimination System. It's a permitting process that the state does under federal guidance and regulation to regulate discharges to water bodies, both the bay and the river. And then we wanted to try to identify potential remedies, if there are any. If you can't do anything about the debris source, is there ways of keeping it off your beaches, in other words? So we looked at that for you. We researched other beach debris accumulation problems throughout the Great Lakes, there are other sites. We wanted to see if we could learn from those and provide some of that information to you. And then we also looked at other ways that you could potentially investigate the problem to try to pin down and identify the source of the debris. So some of the historical research that we did was very telling about what some of the sources might be. And the map you see here is in your report, and it was taken out of a 1965 study that the Environmental Protection Agency did to investigate water quality and benthic macroburrits, or the bugs that lived on the bottom of the river and the bay. And it shows right near the mouth of the Thunder Bay River, sampling locations of the bed, the substrates, and the macroburrit community that lived there. And what they found was there was a lot of paper pulp, wood pulp, that was used in the paper industry, and also wood fibers and sawdust on the bottom of the river and the bay near the mouth of the river as well. That's one of the areas we investigated, and we'll talk about that a little bit here in a minute as well, too. But this is one study from the mid-1960s that showed that there were definitely historical sources of wood debris in the aquatic system. So what did we find at some of the beaches? I'm just going to hit some of the highlights here because some of them are more important than others, and I think it'll give you a good overview of what the problem is at the beaches themselves. So this is a picture from Starlight Beach where some of the worst problems are. And this shows some wood debris that is located on Starlight Beach in more of the northern half of that particular beach, where we were collecting it and mapping the debris field that you see here. And as you can see, it's fairly wide, measuring about 10 or 15 feet in width along the beach, and it's comprised primarily of small wood chips of various sizes. It was one of the larger debris fields that was present at Starlight Beach. This is the very south end of Starlight Beach, where we felt the biggest aesthetic problem was from a user perspective. And what you see here is actually not wood debris, but it's elgal debris, or dead elgal matter that is washing up on the beach. And you can see, it looks green and slimy, it's not very comfortable to walk in. And even worse yet, when you get out into the water column, this is what it looks like. And this would certainly deter me from swimming in it, so I'm sure it deters many of your beach users as well, too. And this is all dead elgal matter that's out in the water, but then being washed up onto the beach as well. And again, this is in the very southern extent of Starlight Beach, so this is not a widespread problem on your beaches, but it is the worst of the problems that we saw in the field from an aesthetic and beach quality perspective. We found this woody debris also at Mishikiwi's Park, we talked about it a little bit earlier here, when your residents brought that up. It wasn't really an issue from a beach perspective, because there's not a managed used beach there, but we wanted to show you that this material, material is in the aquatic system in other places than just on the beach. And here, you can even see it down near the feet of our investigator here in the rock, and he's picked some of that up and has it in his hand as well, too. Now, the vegetation up on this particular shoreline kind of presented that, prevented that material from washing up onto the beach very far and creating huge debris fields, but it was there, and it is spread out throughout the system, not just up on the beaches. Up at Blair Street Park, it's not as big of a problem from what we saw in the field during our investigation, except in this isolated area just south of your pier and the stormwater sewer. And the reason it's accumulating here has a lot to do with shoreline dynamics and the movement of water and debris. The pier and the storm sewer unfortunately block current, therefore the material accumulates in this part of the beach and can't get washed off of it like it does on the north side. So if you go on the north side of this pier and stormwater sewer on Blair Street Bridge, you don't see this problem. The wood debris is much less in terms of its accumulation on the beaches. And this is predominantly wood, but it does have some vegetation mixed in with it as well, too, and is out in the water column, but near, not nearly as bad as the south end of Starlight Beach. So some of the information we looked at tells us where might the debris be accumulating in the system is, you know, some of the satellite image analysis. So I wanted to show you a picture of that, and you can see this big dark signature right in the middle of this satellite image, and that's low light reflectance, high light absorbance, okay? So there's organic matter there of some nature absorbing the light and not reflecting it. And you can see, it's very clearly distinct from the bright sandy and clay and stone bottom, the rock bottom of the rest of the bay. And that was interpreted by mathematical algorithms to be submerged aquatic vegetation, okay? And that's this green area in this map that we provided you in the report. During our investigation, we did find aquatic vegetation in this area, but it was in low densities, not as high densities as we would have guessed or believed from this particular analysis. So we believe it's possible maybe something else, and we've formed our recommendation to investigate that area a little bit more that we'll share with you here in a moment. But I just want to highlight, before we get to those recommendations, some of the major findings that we came away with. And first of all, let's address the MPDS research aspect of it, and I'll let Annette take over with that.
So for the MPDS permits, we found three of them. What I did is I looked at Alpena County, looked at all the permits, and then looked at SIC codes, standard industrial code, to indicate wood product processing. So we found three permits associated with that SIC code. From those three permits, one was a site, a facility that was 3.8 miles away, so it didn't seem like it could be a real source. Another was for the wastewater treatment plant at the DPI site, and the other one was for the DPI site itself. So those are the three permits we found. Based on that, we ended up doing a FOIA request for the MPD, or excuse me, for the MDQ inspection reports, stormwater site inspection reports that DEQ does typically annually on the DPI site. So from those reports, we noted, and we've looked at reports between 2007 and 2014, so it was a pretty large stack of paperwork. In 2009, 10, and 12, DEQ noted some potential issues with woody wood chips at the DPI site. DEQ noted in 2009 that they found a catch basin plugged with wood chips. This was a catch basin near a loading dock. In 2010, they found wood chips in the drainage area of the same catch basin referred to in 2009. In 2012, DEQ found the potential for wood chips to drain into the same catch basin as referred to previously. In 2013 and 14, DEQ didn't note any issues associated with wood chips. Subsequent, during that time, I should say, DPI modified their stormwater pollution prevention plan to deal with those wood chips and those findings that DEQ found. They did various things like more frequent inspections of the catch basin, and they noted that they were going to change their cleaning schedule of the catch basin, so it got more frequently sweeping the paved parking lot in the drainage area of that catch basin. And they noted that they were moving the wood chip pile as well, so it wasn't in that drainage area. So those were the things DEQ found in their stormwater inspections and that we highlighted in the report.
Thanks, Annette. And I just want to clarify that, with regard to the DPI MPDS permit, we haven't formed an opinion about whether they're a major contributor of wood chips to the aquatic system or to what's on your beaches. Again, that's just research of existing documents that we're providing to you for your own information. One of the recommendations we made was for the city to share that report with DPI and do some investigation on its own if they felt that was necessary to do, and your staff has followed up on that, so. Well, I think that's enough to be said about that. We have been invited via email to look at that facility, ECT that is, by DPI managers. We have not done that, it wasn't part of the study to investigate any type of facilities, but certainly that's something that we had recommended to you if you think that's necessarily important to do. Again, that's not an opinion of ECT about DPI and its operations, just reporting information to you. So to continue with the, continue with the major findings then, as I mentioned, the 1965 EPA study clearly showed that there is historical wood debris in the river system, and probably in the bay as well, too. Some of those are from the logging area potential, all the way back to the late 1800s, but it is also due to the paper mills that were along the river at one time and various processing facilities, wood processing facilities and manufacturing facilities that have existed at various times along the river throughout history. During our investigation in the field, we did not detect any wood chips in areas we expected to find them. In other words, we went out to grab samples in the, at the river mouth in the bay, in areas we thought we might find it. Swales between sandbars, for example, out in, out in the bay, those types of areas. And then those net toes that we did in the water column near the river mouth. We didn't find any appreciable amount of debris during those field investigations. Even in the vicinity of the river mouth, EPA had found them in the sediments, we found primarily sand, clay, or bedrock during our investigations. So that major, a major source was not really apparent during this particular study. And the beach debris that we found is very similar to some of the other beach debris problem areas within the Great Lakes. Not all of them, some of them vary, some have all up to plankwood, for example, and you don't have those types of problems, but places like the Manistec River, ALC, for example, has debris very similar to what you have on your particular beaches. And we were able to learn some things from what those folks did to help us formulate some recommendations for you. The debris is mechanically altered. Our inspection of it in our office using microscopes showed that it was clearly wood that had been altered by human means of some sort. So there are human sources in the water system and on your beaches, there's just no doubt about that in our minds. Some of the problem is due to dead elgal matter, as I mentioned earlier. And I just want to point out that the primary reason that is only the, a big problem in the south end of Starlight Beach has everything to do with the shape of the shoreline. It just, it gets washed up in a corner there in the south end of Starlight Beach, basically, and just doesn't get moved by the lake system. Now, that could depend a lot on Great Lakes water levels, and you may see that problem ebb and wane, or get worse and better at certain times throughout the years based on Great Lakes water levels. And that's one of the recommendations we're making as well, too. And then looking at a few different remedies, like, for example, offshore structures that could prevent or change circulation patterns and keep debris from accumulating, just aren't very feasible, and we explain that in the report. So what were some of the recommendations then that we thought might be helpful for you folks moving forward? Well, as I mentioned, to share the report with the DPI agencies as well, too, and it has been shared with DPI, they do have a copy of it. One of the things we were asked earlier on by staff was, is it possible to date the material? And so we investigated that and found out it's not for various reasons and scientific reasons I won't go into here. But one possibility is doing bomb carbon, it's called bomb carbon dating or analysis. Basically, it's just a way of determining if a tree that contributed to the debris you see grew at a particular time when we were doing nuclear testing. And there's a certain type of carbon that was put into the atmosphere, that trees absorbed that as a result of that, and researchers can figure out whether it grew during that timeframe or not. If it did, it couldn't have been from But one possibility is doing bomb carbon, it's called bomb carbon dating or analysis. Basically, it's just a way of determining if a tree that contributed to the debris you see grew at a particular time when we were doing nuclear testing. And there's a certain type of carbon that was put into the atmosphere, that trees absorbed that as a result of that, and researchers can figure out whether it grew during that timeframe or not. If it did, it couldn't have been from the sawing, the sawmill era in the late 1800s and early 1900s, for example, because we weren't doing carbon testing at that time. Sample algae on Starlight Beach that's accumulating there and at locations within the bay, and then you can potentially determine if the material growing out in the bay is the problem that's contributing to the beaches as well, then. Conducting sediment core samples, as I mentioned, we just went down and grabbed samples off the surface of the sediments. But clearly, the EPA found wood debris in sediments off the river mouth. So it may be necessary now to actually do cores and go deeper to try to find that material and see if it's being uncovered at various places. Even if the river has covered over some of that debris through time, through the transport of sand, et cetera, due to Great Lakes water levels and the dynamics of the river, it may get exposed in certain places from time to time and then be covered and exposed and recovered, and it could be a continuous source in that regard. So the only way really to know that for sure is probably to do underwater dive studies, and this is what they've done in other areas where they're getting beach debris problems, where you actually send divers down and observe the debris firsthand. It's really the only true method of going down and telling for sure that, yes, you've got wood debris in a certain area. You could just observe and track the debris over time, especially as the Great Lakes water levels change over time. Is it worse at times or is it better at times based on Great Lakes water levels? It's been bad lately over the last five, six, or six years or so, but there's various reports that we've received at least anyway about how severe it may have been historically or in the past at your beaches. So one option maybe just to do a better job of observing it and tracking it and see how it changes and how severe it is based on Great Lakes water levels. So with that, I'll stop. That's a lot of talking. It's late at night, so we'd love to answer your questions and be resource for you tonight for the rest of the time.
Hopefully, you're not traveling this evening, because...
We're not. We're going to stay in your community, actually, and we're going to enjoy the night.
We expected it to snow today, so...
Good thing for all of us it didn't. I appreciate your study. I do. I was probably one of the real proponents of spending some resources and trying to get this issue resolved, obviously. I didn't really know, you know, what to expect, and so, forgive me for maybe thinking that the scope would be more, but I guess people always expect more. I wanted you to come here for the money and tell me where it came from and how you're going to stop it from happening again. But I appreciate that it's a little bit more of an issue than that. The couple of questions that I did have, just to make sure that I'm clear on the study, because I read it and I intend to read it probably two or three more times just to kind of make sure I didn't miss anything, but the storm sewers, you did some study characterizing what was on the beaches, and so my question as far as not so much the wood chips, but the gunk at Starlight Beach, can you say with confidence that it has more to do or everything to do with algae and nothing to do with storm sewers or any other, anything else going into the river, other than what's out there?
Yes, it's not organic or silt. It is not highly decomposed. It is dead algal matter, and it's observable plant matter, basically. So we're highly confident that it is algae. It's not our analysis in the journey.
So now we just need to market that as something that's really good for you. Say it enough, people will cover miles to walk through that.
Well, they have kale salads, so...
Makes a good salad. The other quick question I had was that, you know, we've heard for, anyone that's lived here for an amount of time has heard that it's just debris that keeps washing up from the river because there was so much logging back in the 1800s. The 65 study was done 47 years ago, and then you did a similar type grab. So you're grabbing the bottom in very similar locations as they did, but you didn't pick, you didn't pull a lot of that out, and you did kind of touch on that towards the end, saying that, you know, it's quite possible that it gets covered and uncovered and covered it. But how do we eliminate or justify the logging issue if we can't find it now? You know, am I asking correctly, or? I don't want to keep blaming the 1800s logging issue if that's just plain not what it is.
Sure. Well, you definitely have wood debris in the system that was generated prior to any type of regulatory programs in the state of Michigan, from various industries that processed wood, and that would include sawmills, and it could go all the way back to the late 1800s potentially. So there is that material in the system. There's probably no doubt about that. But there are other sources as well, too, over time that have contributed to that entire mass of material that's now in the aquatic system and most likely being recirculated from time to time and ending up on your beaches. The only sure way to say that it is just the logging era, for example, is to do something like the carbon dating or the carbon, bomb carbon analysis that would tell you that all that material is historical, that none of it grew during a timeframe when you had industry and those types of things going on in the system. Beyond that, there's really no true way to tell. Most likely, there's a mix of the different types of material in the system.
I hope I'm not making a mountain out of a mole field, but you've referenced several times there was lighter wood and darker wood, and the fact that one opposed to the other absorbed more water. Well, what does that tell us? I didn't understand why it mattered.
Sure. The main point of that was that the two different types of debris are different parts of the tree, basically. We believe that the darker, flakier material is bark, whereas the other material is the wood from the tree itself. So that tells us that, basically, the whole tree is being processed in some way, like sawing, for example, which gets both of the materials into the system. Other types of industrial processing might not have dealt as much with the bark, for example, and would have just been dealing with the wood, because they'd strip the logs from the bark first, chip it, and then just have the chips on the facility site, for example, potentially.
So does that lead us to believe it was an older, rather than a newer?
Possibly, yes.
I see.
Yep.
Thank you.
And the bark and the wood are two totally different types of tissue, and you can see that in the analysis. That was the point there.
The algae material that you're finding now with the invasive species that we've seen recently to help the water clear in the loa, are you seeing more of a die-off in recent years compared to, let's say, 15 years ago? Much more so?
It's not necessarily the die-offs. Algae do die off. That's the normal process, but you may have much higher production than what you used to, more algal cells and more algal biomass in the system itself, and that could be because of zebra and quagga mussels making the water clearer, and then that algae can collect more light and be more productive. It could be because sand transport during low Great Lakes water level has exposed more bedrock, and some algas prefer bedrock to grow on than attach to the actual bedrock. So it could be a whole host of things that have increased the productivity. It could be just high nutrient loading in the bay over the course of a number of years. So it's probably most likely higher production of algae in the system overall, and the die-off is just a normal process.
And then you had mentioned other sites that have similar situations. Are the sites comparable, such as we're sitting at a large bay, and from my understanding, the flow within a large bay is critically different than if we were a community that was out in the big lake?
Yes.
So any man-made structure can basically alter the flow immensely within that bay?
You're right about the fact that the bay, what we call the hydrodynamics, the movement of water, is going to be different than on the open lake and the open shoreline. However, man-made structures affect both similarly. Like your pier, for example, would affect sediment and material transport the same way it would on the Great Lakes shoreline in an open situation. The bay just sets up much different circulatory patterns, and a lot of times they can act a little bit like a closed system. They can continually move material and recycle material that doesn't interact as much with the open lake system, whereas outside of a bay on a natural shoreline or a normal shoreline, those sediment transport processes and material transport processes are much more frequently exchanged with the open water body.
So I think many of the historical sites were in bay areas like this one.
Okay, they were?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
That's fairly common, especially river mouths and drawn river mouths.
You did mention, it's one of the suggestions, that removing that pier might be helpful. Obviously, there's some other issues and... But in your opinion, would it make a difference because of the water flow change, or is it more of a hope that it would make a difference?
Well, at times, Great Lakes water levels would be higher than the storm sewer pipe itself, so you could get some circulation through the pier from north to south, which could lessen the degree to which material accumulates on the south side. It's probably always going to affect it to some degree, but it may be less obvious of a problem, for sure. There's really nothing you can do about the storm sewer. You can't really lower it or remove it. It's a necessary thing, so it's not like we brought that issue up as a potential remedy, but it's worth discussing.
And I think you guys probably understand our main concern is tourism and how it affects that. But now that you know it's there and have looked at it, does it pose any type of health risk for users or users over an extended period of time, or is it just...
Yeah, that's a fair question. You're probably more qualified to answer that question than I am.
Well, the health department does do bacteria sampling on a routine basis out at, I'm not sure exactly which beaches, but probably...
Starlight.
Starlight. I know they do Starlight, and you're...
Lee and Thompson would be probably the other one.
And the E. coli conditions, bacteria conditions at Starlight, from what I remember, were good. Were pretty, were good. So you don't have beach closure issues. It's more of an aesthetic problem.
We have had them generally after major rainfalls or that, where we get the watchout from the outfall right there at the south end of the Starlight Beach, which is where all the algae is, and that's usually when we've had problems, after major rainfalls during the summer.
The algae could contribute to that, but it's not the sole thing, increasing those elevated E. coli counts. Runoff itself has elevated levels of E. coli, so in lots of urban areas, in every urban area, I would say, you're always going to have elevated bacteria levels after rain events.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but they're even finding an E. coli now harboring for a period of time in natural beach sands in some cases, so it's probably not exacerbating that problem greatly.
One other question, and I understand I'm a liberal arts guy, so I'll do my best on this. It seems like one difficult thing to reconcile in the report, and I suspect it was difficult for you, is trying to judge how much of the debris is historical and how much of it is from the modern era. And I think you, I thought you did a good job of trying not to throw anybody under the bus, and kind of call it a minor contributor, maybe, in the modern era. I guess one specific question I have about that that I have trouble with is, think if it was historical, that you would be able to find this large debris field that it's all kind of flowing from? And is it a bad assumption to assume, well, if there's not a big field there, that maybe more of it's modern than what we like to think, or is it just buried or dispersed differently somehow? Just common sense, that we dumped a bunch of shit in there. It should be a big pile of it down there somewhere. I don't know why I tried to sound smart the first time. And so, I mean, shouldn't we be able to, wouldn't it have collected over time if it was historical? Or is that not making sense?
Yeah, there could be a lot of factors in play there, and it's difficult without a lot more research to really be able to answer the question. Marty mentioned a few recommendations, like doing sediment cores, looking at a bigger piece of the bay. I think we only looked in the first 400, 600 feet of shoreline, something like that. So there is a larger area in the bay that, you know, we just couldn't investigate under this study. So there are other areas that, you know, debris could be accumulating that we just didn't see during this study. So I wouldn't say, I don't agree with your assessment that because we didn't find a big debris field source in the bay, that it's all, it's more or less coming from modern sources. I don't think we'd agree with that.
We, you know, obviously, we don't want to come in and spend a whole bunch of the city's money to do a huge investigation, so we started out with something we felt was manageable for you and got you started at least anyway. And I think some of the information we found has helped narrow the field, so to speak. We believe the material is there based on what we've seen from our research, and there are other ways of investigating, but obviously, it becomes more complicated and continues to add cost. So whether or not that's something you want to continue to pursue is going to be up to you ultimately. It's there. It's just a matter of finding it and figuring out if it's going to be remedied from the system. They've done the same thing in other areas of the Great Lakes. They spent quite a bit of time trying to figure out where the material is. Like I said, they've used underwater dives and everything else to locate it and figure out where it's isolated so they can clean it up.
So it is a possibility if you find a major area that you can clean it up. But if it's spread out everywhere, it's...
Sure, just like you could dredge an area. You'd use basically the same technology as dredging, if you could identify it. NOAA used to have grants to investigate these kind of fields, but they stopped offering those grants in the last few years. They are funding the cleanups, but not the investigative work. So we were hoping to bring that to you as an option, as a funding source if you wanted to look further, but it's just not an active grant program right now on the investigative side.
I think, dear Greg, the mayor, we wanted you to come in and say, oh, this is it, and this is how you fix it, and you're here, and that's the end. I'm sure that's pretty typical, you know, our situation's pretty typical in how things work out, but at least we have a place to start with some more concrete than what we've worked on in the past. So we do appreciate that and some of the suggestions about maybe what we could do to move forward.
You know, and I'd like to point out, I guess, just briefly, on the topic of DPI. DPI is a great partner. They're a great partner with the city and the community, and I'm sure just by looking at what you had to offer with their documentation you've got in here, they're not going to hide a whole bunch of, they're not going to hide a bunch of data from us. They're not going to say, they know we're doing the study. We shared the study with them. We shared your results with them. They're not going to be sitting there not sharing any information with us, so I'm pretty confident in that, and we'll continue to discuss this topic with them with the possibility that what they may have to offer. I do have a question before you leave as far as observing and tracking, because at this point, it's probably one of the only things that we're going to be able to do. I'm not going to sit here and say that I'm going to support a whole lot of dumping a lot of money into a carbon bomb study or anything of that nature, only because I still don't feel like it's going to tell us that much more than we already know. But as far as observing and tracking, what? So let's say on July 3rd, because that's the day it always happens, but let's say July 3rd, you know, we get this big mass of debris field that you've seen, because it's not every day, it doesn't happen every day. We get these big masses of them that come out. Let's say on the day that it comes in, we've observed it, what do we need to, what do we need to look at? Do we need to go, what would you recommend? Do we go back and look at the temperatures and climatic conditions of the last five days? Do we look at, what do we need to document and then do it again when it happens again? What's going to help us to determine anything?
Sure, yeah. I think there's some very straightforward ways of doing that with existing city staff, especially once, if you have staff or employees that visit the beaches on a regular basis, you could just develop a very simple one-page form with some very specific information on it, and you'd want to know, you know, the first date debris starts showing up, for example, where it's showing up, if the character of it looks similar over time, each individual inspection, for example. And they don't have to observe change, but if they describe it on the form, you'll see that change over time. Great Lakes water levels in the inspection season, weather, specific weather events. There was a large wind event, a large rain event, something along those lines. You'll want to document those kinds of things, but they're very observable things, easy things to record and then easy things to track over time when you have the inspection forms to compare over time.
This is another quiet question. Assuming that, hoping, lake levels will increase, will go back up, how, would that fix it? Is there any way that could fix it?
If the Great Lakes levels increase...
Would come back to their...
Right. Well, in 2013, they hit a new record low, and nobody expected that. Last year, they rebounded, and Lake Huron was around its average, so that's a positive trend. If Great Lakes levels continue to increase, it does change circulation patterns and, you know, the movement of water within the bay. How that affects the debris, we're not exactly sure, because that takes a very involved, expensive study, which you definitely don't want to do. But that's one of the reasons that we're recommending this tracking system, because if the Great Lakes water levels do affect it, and especially its severity and impact on beach users, hopefully, you can determine that with something very simple like tracking it over time and learn that. it over time and learn that. Maybe you decide as a community, I don't know, that you could put up with that and that, that, that short period of time, every now and then, when Great Lakes water levels are at their historic lows and you have the problem, you're going to know it. And the rest of the time, maybe it's something that's livable. I don't know. But, you know, it's basically what the recommendation is, is paying attention to that over time and seeing how much of it affected.
Excuse me.
It could be, it could be significant.
I would, I've also talked with Rich, he and I have talked, is we do have a new beach cleaner, which is supposed to have the ability, which the other one didn't, of being able to go partway out into the water. We do have to get a permit from the DQ to do that. And that may be another thing that we, well, I think we should be doing on a more regular basis where we can get out at least partway into the water. I'm only going to observation because I'm not a scientist per se, but I know when we, I moved here, the water levels were much higher in the late 90s or 2000s. You could go out, yes, you'd, in certain areas, hit the walk on bedrock, but generally it was sand. Now, all that's pretty much exposed and they showed it in their pictures where there's algae now growing on the rock itself because it's exposed. And it's really changed. We've lost a lot of the sand that we had that would be there. If the lake levels rise, I think you begin to see also probably more sand moving back in rather than being washed away and pulled out into the bay can make some difference. But I think we should definitely maintain and, and do very regular cleaning, not only of the beach itself, but down in, as far into the water as the machine can go and that we have a vehicle that can get down there to pull the, the cleaner. What's that?
He wants to borrow the fire truck.
Oh, well, yes, we, yes, we do have a new fire truck. If it can go through there, maybe that's the answer. But I think those, I mean, as the city manager, just looking at dollars and cents, I agree to go and spend large amounts of money on something that may not give us any further results than what we have. As they said, tracking it, looking what happens if, as the water levels fluctuate, if they continue to rise, what is the impact? And then doing the cleaning to see if that reduces impact, at least to a degree that makes it much more suitable for, for use by the public. The other woman who was up earlier, who spoke about Michigan Keynes and getting rid of what's there, creating the beach again, it will be interesting if we do, if we do that. And again, that's a matter of dollars and cents, but if you do that, nice, because when I came here again, that was all a single beach. What does that do in terms of either the debris and how it affects the, allow it all to, like a marsh, how? Those will all be interesting and we aren't going to really know until.
Would you have a guess at that? Kind of shook your head. If we did clear the vegetation off, off of that area, would it, you have an idea what factor?
Not for me. Move me.
And I think you mentioned it outside that, where the marsh is. And I would have to guess that, certainly that marsh are, we are getting very far because caught up in that.
Helped them. There you. Arms. There you.
Really did, I appreciate you coming and giving us your time.
Go out and enjoy the community while you're here and kind of. Like to throw something out real quick. I guess I would ask if we could have a further discussion about it, like, like DPI to have a chance, kind of continue to work with this. NOAA has a perspective on a couple of things they brought up. They could, that person, hear from staff on some of the recommendations. I, I guess I'd kind of like to do a little bit for research, give us a chance to talk about. Kind of look at some.
What do you think that you wanted to state at time or plate customer staff?
And it may have been on the mind. For a tour of what they talked about in the guide. I'm, I'm, I'm great with that and I would definitely like to be on that list. That'd be great. And I, I'm not so convinced that this is a, that DPI would have a lot to do with it. But with that said, it would be great to see how that works. I'm really, I, I don't know really what I guess you mean by tabling it. I want to keep going on, on this, I guess, at least to the extent that we can. I want to put out that, that, that there's a group in the school system and there's a volunteer group, just a beach volunteer group, somebody wants to just start something. They want to get with staff, either they want to call Greg, because I'd like to, I don't know how much staff, the presenters may have felt that we have a lot of staff, but as far as, you know, and what I'm looking for, and here's what I'm suggesting, you can take it for what it's worth, I guess, but what I'm suggesting is.
Don't ruin my trip to the beach every day. I'm looking forward to it.
If you're going to the beach every day, if we've got guys that are emptying trash down there anyhow, or if we've got a volunteer group, you go down there, they don't have to, they don't have to determine what it is. As far as I'm concerned, if they see it and they want to grab a scoop of it, let's put together maybe some documentation for them that says, you know, grab one cupful of whatever the debris is, give it to whoever it is that's going to check it. I mean, your, your average guy may or may not know what to look for. Just kind of put together some things, okay? And go by what they, you know, described it as. Is it mechanical? Is it non-mechanical? Has it been sawed or whatnot? Is it dark light, what have you? And just get some, okay? And then, and then you say, okay, you got it on that particular day. And then you have something else in your form, maybe some other people that are going to look and say, it was, you know, it was really windy the other day. We had waves of whatnot. Those, all that data is easily available, whether it rained, whether it didn't rain, whether it was windy, whether it was stormy. And just kind of put that together and say, okay, you know, at the end of the summer, you might find out that there's just absolutely no correlation whatsoever with the climate and the storms to this gunk, but we won't know if there is or not until we, you know, until we observe it. You can have anything on that. I know I'm rambling, but this is kind of my thing because it's what I do.
Gave you the eye, didn't it?
Phil's given me that.
Yeah.
MBA, NCAA or something going on. But even to the point where, okay, was the, was the dam open in the last five days? And if the Ninth Street Dam was open, okay, fine. Was the Four Mile open? Was the, what, what was open? What, what, what happened in those last couple of days prior to this, to the event? And maybe we can figure this out, at least get something figured out, so. I don't want to table this for too long because it's already March. So, you know, if we do want to put something together.
I think it's a bit, you know, we can certainly track those events. Yeah, I mean, we can track the weather. We have access to historical weather patterns, you know, over the internet. If I see it on the internet, it's got to be true, so. We can document all those things. I, you know, I don't know if we can draw the scientific correlations from that. You know, there may be some, but we'll do the best we can. That, I guess that's the best that I can say is that we will try to track and, we have somebody at the beach five days a week, or actually seven days a week picking up debris so we can check those things. We can track the weather. That's easy enough to do, so we can work on that.
And just to clarify, and the mayor asked, a motion to table a discussion is tonight. We don't have enough information to have an intelligent discussion.
Exactly.
There's not to stop.
Oh, right. Yeah, we're not. I mean, this was just a, this was just a presentation. There's no action to take, you know, either way. Yeah, I didn't, I wouldn't expect that we were taking any particular action. And as far as, you know, as far as what I was talking about, I mean, it may take a while to just, to kind of figure out what we should track or what we should or shouldn't. So I'm not necessarily directing staff to do something particular right now other than kind of think about it and see if maybe somebody else, maybe a science class will step up and, and know more about this than we do. That wouldn't be too difficult from my perspective for me because I don't know that much about it, but.
Well, I think you made a very interesting point in having a form of some sort for people who want help in gathering information, something to guide them. And it would be interesting to know about which dams were open and which, and when, and how long, and all of that. I think it would be valuable for us to know that.
So it may be.
What?
It may be, or it may end up, you know what I'm, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
At the end, it may not.
But at least we know.
Tell us much.
Rich can work with, with consultants and get a sample form of, you know, tracking, for tracking in terms of what they would suggest and then we can move from there.
And I agree with Sean and the mayor both. I think that's a great topic, you know, let's keep the discussion going and continue to understand what we need to buy or, you know, purchase to keep our beaches, even if we have to use the new tow truck, the new fire truck that Rich is.
Yeah, that's what I think.
I thought we, I thought that, that last year, we didn't get something last year?
We bought a new beach cleaner that's supposed to.
Oh, but it's not good enough to go in the water?
No, it's the equipment that we tow, tow it with. We just use those, like when you see cleaning the sidewalks and that this winter. This one we use to pull it. It does fine in sand, up in the sand, but when you get down there where it's wet, we just, we bury it. And we need, what I'm looking at is see if I can go to one of our local farm implement dealers, see if I can borrow a, a tractor, four-wheel drive, larger tractor to try it to see if.
Well, hovercraft.
A what?
Hovercraft.
That would be economical.
I'm a volunteer for that. That'd be fun.
I actually think, because Rich, you had told me that there's a truck down there that you emptied the debris into and then every, so often when that gets full, you have to empty it. So I think if we track for a while, we can see patterns depending on how often you have to empty the debris from that truck. So if, if we're getting more, that truck gets emptied more if it stays another day or two before it has to empty.
It'll be interesting because the new, the new beach cleaner, which we just started using right after July, fourth of July weekend last year, doesn't remove as much sand. It's more strictly the debris. It shakes a lot of the sand back out. So we've already, we've seen that reduction. It's now just a matter of the guy getting used to how much he's taking out.
Based on.
And how long it takes to fill that truck up.
It'd be interesting to find out if the seagrass is helping or hurting too, whatever kind of grass it is.
Down, down at the south end of Michigan Keynes, there's a lot of the flame mygis that are growing in there and that, that continues on well beyond Michigan Keynes Beach.
Seems like it would collect a lot.
I move you to.
Second.
You are watching All About El Pino.